This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time of the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the scheduling was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January thirty first, twenty twenty five, and two over times on January twenty third, twenty twenty five. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of this meeting. So do you roll call?
Uh, Mrs. Bush.
Here.
Mr. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Mill. Mr. Mallon.
Here.
Mr. Wall.
Here.
Mr. Minka. Uh, Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mrs. Antonin. Mr. Bailey.
Present.
Okay, uh, so questions. Political allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. One votes here, I'm gonna sit in a big voice there, yeah, kind of, I heard the usual for me.
I never noticed what she said, I can't choose to.
Thank you.
I know.
What up, Brian?
I had to learn it too.
Is there a rule?
So he's technically a, a, a member of the board and it's a class, you could probably tell me, Dan.
It's like two.
It's a certain class, class. And it means that he's also a member of council. So there is an appointed member on the board that is a member of council. For his own board, he's the liaison.
Oh, so it's not, oh, so it's not an actual membership on the zoning board?
Yeah, even though I tried to come up with it.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, I mean, plenty more to do that.
You're on the board, you're on the base.
Alright, well, excited to.
Okay.
Uh, so we have no old business or new business, we're gonna move right to the administrative items. Uh, first is the, the regular meeting minutes from March eighteenth. Uh, they were distributed before the meeting, I don't know if anyone has any, uh, comments. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mallon.
Yes.
Wall.
Yes.
And Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, well, uh, the next item is the approval of the executive session minutes. There were any comments? Nope. Make a motion to approve. Second.
Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mallon?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Bailey?
Yes. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, uh, last, last meeting, we, um, we created a resolution for the approval of Sandy Hook Seafood LLC, six fifteen, six nineteen River Road, block twenty five, blocks ten, point oh one and eleven. And so, um, that resolution was, was drafted and put before, uh, distributed to the board prior. So all we have to do is approve the resolution. Um, I met or spoke with Doug on the phone, there were some, some minor changes that went, went through with, with Rich Cardella. Uh, and the applicant that were not at all material in substance or form to the resolution that we drafted. Um, and, and so, you, you know, there is some grammatical, grammatical changes and things of that nature. So, um, I'm, I'm recommending that we approve the resolution, um, uh, if, if there are any comments or concerns. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Bush?
Yes.
Mr. Olson?
Yes.
Next one?
Just there, there's Dan, I said anything?
No, I, I said in the minutes. So I would add something in that meeting.
Alright. Uh, Mr. Mallon?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Bailey?
Yes. Okay, so, um, so, uh, we have Michael Sullivan here, um, for our, um, for our master plan reexamination discussion. Um, Michael, we are having, uh, I guess, uh, really hard time getting, uh, getting started and, and sort of what are.
Can I sit here?
Yeah, absolutely, please. And so we thought it important, um, to, to have you here today. Um, so that we can start getting, getting organized and, and then also sort of start on first steps, which we believe is a survey. Um, that needs to be designed and completed and, or I'm sorry, needs to be designed and distributed to, um, to the public. And so we wanted to talk to you about how we sort of get started forming the different committees. We have, um, the different, we, we have, uh, one, two, we have four, two, three, four, five, um, different, um, committees, um, that, that we will form. Like, I think the remainder of the, the plan document would be, would be done by, you, you know, this group collectively. Um, but, but we, we, we have land use, housing, circulation, utilities, conservation, recreation and open space. As the areas that we feel are going to need, you know, primarily the most work, um, and focus. And so, um, we have, um, members of the, of the board that have volunteered to lead those, uh, lead those different committees.
And that's consistent with the framework that I provided to you. I mean, it seems like it aligns because we met before.
You were here one other time.
Right, and, uh, and yeah, so that aligns with the framework that I, I articulated.
That's right.
Yeah.
So, um, I guess, what are we, what do we do at this point in time? I think that's kind of like where, where, you, you know, we've, we've gotten your cost estimate.
Right.
We wanted to start, I think, with, um, I, you, you know, I guess the design of the survey and, and a timeline for that. And then also perhaps, you, you know, what would a, you, you know, a more detailed timeline or project plan look like for this group?
Okay. Um, so the public visioning survey, that's really an overarching kind of thing, right? That's meant to really extract general themes. The, and to sort of bring focus to the other, um, committees and what you focus on. Um, and so, uh, the questions really need to be coming out of, I think that each of these different, um, plan elements. Um, the reexamination report's not really a plan at all, it's just the, the statutory things we're gonna do. Um, but land use, circulation, conservation, recreation, utility, all, all that kind of thing. So you should be thinking about, uh, questions that would really, um, focus on the issues that maybe you've already started to understand about things that are happening. Um, and I, I'm sorry to bring a, a sample survey with me, um, but we can, you know, the survey would have demographics in it upfront, okay? And then you would have your series of questions and they can be broken down by the sector of, um, focus, whatever the focus is on that.
So the, the, so who, so the demographics, we have to get a, a demographic survey of the town or?
It, every survey, you include demographic information so you know who's responding. If you are, um, only getting responses from everybody who's eighty-five and older.
I see your point.
Or everybody who's eighteen and younger, then you need to understand that because it could impact how you plan for things. If the folks are, you know, folks are.
So you're getting the demographic information from the survey?
Yeah, the demographics, that informs the answer. So there'd be cross tabs, uh, that would happen and those cross tabs would indicate, you know, in this bracket, in this gender, whatever it is, answered these questions this way. So you can correlate that and that gives you, it's more meaningful than just finding out the wrong answer.
Okay.
So, so that's, that's, that's how these surveys are set up and, um, I, I think the first step is really for your committees to begin to, uh, draft questions that they want answers to. And then we would review that and we would see what we think may be missing or what should be emphasized. Maybe there's multiple part questions. We try to keep it as simple as possible because these things are, they can get unbuilding, um, and you want them to be able to give you the information as clearly as you can.
As an example, um, I, I kind of jumped on the utilities, uh, um, segment, uh, and we, I was looking back at some of my notes, like, we've done a lot of work in town on stormwater management, you know? Um, would it, would an example of question be to the, in the survey, like, do you, do you, the public feel as if stormwater management has been resolved as an issue in Fairhaven or is that, am I?
You have, well, the first part of that question needs to be explained, right? Um, you, you can't assume everybody understands what power management means, right? So, um, but it, it may be as simple as, you know, uh, has your house flooded in the past, you know, X, do you have repetitive flooding at your house?
Hmm.
You know, and then if so, where's your address or something like that? Um, do you think, uh, because it's really the assessment of your engineer to determine whether or not there's public, um, what, what, look, for instance, what a solution will be to someone who answers by repetitive losses and then the same, you know, whatever. And, you know, is that something the public needs to fix from a capital perspective or is something that needs to, you know, regulations need to change? You know, or, you know, let's say that somebody had a house that was repeatedly flooded and they ran into zoning issues with respect to phasing it or modifying it in some way. Then that would indicate some sort of regulatory response. Otherwise, it may be a capital response.
So I guess, I guess my question for us, do, do we need to make some sort of decision as whether or not we, we are engaging on this contract, right? Is that the first foremost thing or will be already decided? I think we've already decided that. Good, yeah. I felt like the last meeting wasn't, but it felt like, yeah, yeah.
Don't, I don't think it's been decided yet at the governing body level. Um, we did have a conversation about, um, about it. Uh, so, I think.
Do we need it, do we need it with that?
I'll see you guys later. Well, I don't know if, um, you know, this is the first time I've done master plan. I don't know if you guys would, if it would make sense for you guys to amend what you want, uh, but there's a, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's, so that's the whole drive in, like, yeah, in order to engage my, what are, what are the next steps?
Because there's a lot of things involved, there's a, there's a process, we were talking with the CFO about it. On the, a couple of different paths to take, we were sort of trying to figure that out at the last executive session.
Okay, so the, the, I, I was under the impression that the board, that this had been provisioned in the budget, right? That was the whole point of getting the estimate is so that they could, that we had.
I think there is provision in the budget to do a master plan, but I don't think that we've formally engaged. But is that correct? Is that your?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so, so we're on the same page now.
Okay.
Um, so there will be a master plan. Uh, but there's a, a process, you know, Nancy was walking us through, sort of what we have to do.
Okay. I, I think we covered it in the last couple of meetings. I don't think we're, we're, we're certainly not, I mean, there's not a whole lot of time on the calendar between now and what, uh, twenty twenty six?
Is it August?
You know, I, I guess my expectation is that this process is not going to be a short one, um, you know.
No, we spelled it out to be ten, twelve months in here.
Twelve months, let's, at least within the timeframe.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we're getting, we're getting up to the right foot.
Yeah.
Um, I will tell you that, uh, my firm is currently, uh, deep in housing plan production. You may know something about affordable housing. Um, and, uh, so in terms of resources, you know, we can begin these initial steps. Um, as we get towards the, through the summer, but, um, the resources in my office really will open up, and I said this to the CFO when I had a conversation with him too. Until we get to that, like, June, when we're just having hearings and stuff on, on master, we're doing about thirty plans, uh, for different towns.
Does that, twelve months still, that's still accurate then, like, based on?
Yeah, it's, it's accurate. I think that, you know, uh, you know, I've been planning post-June thirtieth to dive into this.
I see.
And, um, and in terms of resource allocation, and so we're ready for it and, um, we'll move as fast as you guys can move. Um, we've got a good team, we've got more than one person who's gonna work on this. Um, in various respects, we've got some mapping, analysis, survey work and things like that. So, uh, we're, we're well-staffed to do it. It's just that at this period, um, I don't want to have anybody, you know.
Right, so I think that's the, I mean, I think that's one of the things we were, I, I guess, trying to figure out last meeting is, what do we do between now and when there's resources to be, to be applied? Like, I, I, I assume like we can't just come in here on the, in the June meeting and be ready to run.
Well, just so you know, I'm the backstop for all my people, right? So they can't get to something I have to do it, right? So, um, I think these, these are really good questions for, I'm, I'm really getting a sense of where you need to, where we need to do some pre, pre-planned work, pre-planned development work. And, um, we can dedicate some time to it to get those things moving, um, so that we're not just sitting here waiting until June. Um, that's, that's the way I plan to handle this. So hopefully that works for you. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Can you talk about the community engagement? How do you, how do you run that process? You did our last plan, correct? With ten?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Uh, measure.
It would be better.
Yeah, as I said, the work's changed since then. Um, but how do you, how do you, what's the normal, what's the standard way to get feedback from the community? Well, there's, there, there's no standard way. Every town's a little different, right? And so what we've laid out is, um, the way to do this and the public engagement. The, the community visioning survey, very high-level survey is the first thing and we, and we usually like to start with that because it really starts people focusing. Um, and, um, and then, uh, once we start with that, there's, uh, committee meetings. Uh, but then we have an open house that we scheduled here, there's the public planning board meetings. Um, there's other things that we put in the, in the scope that are optional in case that you need them, because every town's a little different. Um, open, we have an open house in here, um, which is, uh, which is something we like to do. Um, uh, add-ons, you know, you could do pop-ups where there's somebody, you know, who's kind of hanging around at like, let's say it's a supermarket or whatever, and you have a table and people come up and it's like, oh, here's what's going on. Do you have any questions about this particular thing? Um, if there are special, if there are neighborhood-based things that you want to do, you think that certain issues are relevant, certain, just to a neighborhood, like the business district or something? Um, then you could do something there that really focuses that way. We've also included in the base scope, um, meetings with, uh, focus groups, okay? Uh, and those focus groups usually are folks, uh, who are not planning board members or the general public. But they have specific interests. Let's say that it's the Retail Merchants Association, where it's the, the residential realtors, or just the realtors. Like, and, and let's hear what they have to say, because very often those groups will have, uh, things to say about regulations, processes, um, capital, uh, investments that they think that the public should make. And so those are the various things. And then, um, what we do is, as we move through this process, we start to build this, um, layers of the input that we've gotten. And that becomes really the, the basis for the thinking that the committees will do and ultimately the, you know, we set, we usually set up a master plan committee, um, to make the decisions, to, to, you know, when decisions have to be made. Um, that could be the whole planning board, or it could be a subcommittee. I mean, in most towns, it's planning board members and maybe environmental commission member, it really depends on who's gonna be involved. Um, when we were doing Princeton's master plan, we even had, uh, one of the capital planning people from the, uh, university on that team. Uh, so, so there's a lot of different ways to do it. Um, and we're open to that, right? So, uh, if you, if you look at our proposal and you see things that make sense, and you see things that don't make sense and you like to modify, then we're gonna let you know that. Um, but there's lots of ways to get public input. Um, if there are, the, the, the open house is held down the road because we want to be able to understand the broad issues of the public, or that they have. Um, and then we want to bring them into the, um, to the world of the committees. And then based on that, there may be questions that these committees are developing, options, let's say, and you want to test those out. So we don't go to the open house and say, what do you think? We go to the open house and we say, here's a particular issue, you know, and here's a way to respond to it. And there'll be somebody manning that station, right? Maybe there's five stations because we have five different things we're talking about here. And, um, it gives them an opportunity to be more focused, um, and to focus on specific questions you have that you want answered so that you, it can inform your master plan. Is that helpful?
Yes.
So just kind of piggybacking off that explanation, so in, uh, let's say we had an open house.
Hmm.
Are, are, are we looking at, like, I'm trying to understand the artifacts, like, how we're getting, how we're listening input? Is it presentation that, that you or others are giving? Is it poster boards, drawings, like, like, what is it that they're reacting to?
Yeah, I, I mean, typically, one of the, and it really depends on the information you want to get from them. Um, uh, for instance, in, um, in some towns, you know, when we're talking about housing or building or development, you know, we might have a, a board that has, you know, single-family house, you know, twin, you know, small multifamily, larger multifamily, and have that correlated with, um, where it would should be located, right? This is just a sample. And folks come in and you give them, like, tape dots and they just go like this, you know, what their preferences are. And then maybe they're color-coded, so it's, you know, red, yellow, green, or it's, you know, one, two, three, here my number one choice, second choice, third choice. That's, that's one way of doing it. Um, if you had, uh, for circulation and mobility, I think that, uh, we've done, and this is, this is burdensome. It takes a lot of processing, but, um, having folks actually mark up individual maps of the, of the borough. And, and indicate where they think there are problems with, let's say pedestrians in the crowd, you know, that's a very walkable place, right? But there are places where there's conflicts between cars and people. So let's reinforce where those are. And when you pitch your master plan element, then you're talking about those more specifically and focusing whether, you know, policies, whether it's, um, a capital investment there in order to, um, fix these issues, or it's just budgeting for improvements, or it's regulations, whatever that is. Those are some of the examples. Um, and it's not a one-size-fits-all, but generally we use boards, we have physical information, um, and we tabulate that. We try to make it as objective as possible, but this is a subjective world. All that objective data is going to come down to subjective, uh, decisions by you. One of the things that I, I try to coach wars is that, uh, there are some folks who don't like to make decisions and they want the data to just tell them what to do, and it's never gonna do that. You're always gonna have to make some sort of decision.
No, the reason I ask is, in, in recent history, we've, we've, I think it's been effective, the open houses around, when the, the design for the police station and the, the community center modifications and, um, I've seen that work really well. And it, and it makes sense because you've got something physical to look at, react to, give comments on. Ultimately, what we're producing is, you know, like a PDF document. So it's a little bit, I'm just curious like how you guys kind of bring that to life to get that feedback, because people will, no matter how many sessions we set up, no matter how people, like, and people are invited, there will be set people that say they were not engaged.
People always say that.
And so it's, you know, how do we, you know, and, and maybe there's a, a digital element we haven't talked about too, that's more open than just like, uh, you know, a static survey, maybe there's other ways of presenting, whatever the information ends up being, you know, that they consume.
Yeah, so in other, in other, uh, projects, we have built engagement hubs, digital engagement. Okay, and, and just to get back to your open house, nobody goes in there unequipped with information. You know, by that time, we've done an analyses, we're starting to develop the questions and decisions. And so we, we, we give a briefing, like, one of the boards would be a briefing, right? You know, here's the issues and here's why these are important and we want to hear from you, right? So it's not just, what do you think? It's, there's an issue here and we try to articulate that. Um, with the engagement hubs, the engagement hubs are really a place for folks to go for ongoing information on the development of the plan and ultimately the plan, plan itself. And it can be hosted by you, it can be hosted on a separate website with, with links to your, uh, website. There's lots of ways to do that. And there's different tiers of these engagement hubs. I mean, there are some that are just off the charts and there's some that would be a reasonable spend for you guys, right? So depending on what you want to do. But those engagement hubs are great because you'll have meeting dates on there, you know, you'll have, you create a, a list, you know, people sign up so they get alerts, things like that. So you do that kind of a thing. Um, and so when the people stand up, when you're about to adopt a plan and they'll say, well, I never heard about this and nobody talked to me, you can, I mean, I've, I've had people do it that will read them, you know, a two-page list of every opportunity they've had to talk with you. So, I mean, that's, that's part of the appendices that we will put in the plan and they would, they could be hosted either on your website or on an engagement. The one thing we exclude in here, which is critical to this, is communications and how to get people going, right? And that's a critical piece of this. It's something that is time-consuming. You need, you know, for instance, um, you know, press releases, um, making sure those are working, making sure it's tied in with all the meetings and things like that. And it's repetitive, communications with respect to these things are very repetitive, particularly surveys. With a survey, you could, you gotta build the survey. Once you've built the survey, you know, a week, you know, two or three weeks out, you're telling people, the survey's coming, the survey's coming, check your inbox, the survey's coming. Then you tell them the survey's here, then you tell them, okay, you've got two weeks to do it. And so you got one week, and you tell them it's closing tomorrow.
Three days, two days, yeah.
And then afterwards you thank them and, uh, and then that's, that's how it goes. So these communications, um, are very important and if you're looking for engagement and you don't do that communication side, you may not get everybody you want. Just, just our experience.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because I think there's just the simple robust comes out every Monday, right? Like, being.
Should be on there.
With the, you know, you know, during this period of time.
Right.
We should always have.
Constantly.
You know, a, a tile on there. And, you know, these hubs aren't too onerous some to kind of build out, like, I think even from the get-go with, you know, what, even if it's just organizing our five categories, or it's, you know, those five categories with like high-level issues that we resurrect from, you know, prior materials, and it just kind of gets the ball rolling that this is, this is happening in twelve months, so.
Right.
The, the other part of the communication is branding. Okay, that's also something you do, so that there's recognizable, recognizable iconography, um, throughout the process, so that when people see it, oh, that's the master plan update. That's the master plan update. I understand what that is. Um, and we often, um, we can, we can bring in, uh, iconography early, if we agree on it, that would be used for each of the different elements, right? So people are cued into it.
Okay. So, again, getting back to, what, what do we do, like, today, day one? That question, right? Yes, I think we need to probably come to a place where we are in agreement that we want to send a recommendation to the, to the government body. Yes. Are we integrated? I am, yeah.
And we had, we hashed it last month.
Yeah.
We ended that meeting saying we were going forward.
Yeah. Good, great.
So that's on, on a, a new master plan, not a re-ample deal, that's the question you're answering?
No, what we were answering was the, the.
The engagement of the.
They, they provided us the cost estimate in a, in a process.
Yeah.
And we went through that over a couple of sessions.
And your CFO has this, you know, we talked about this.
I have to be honest.
I think your, I think your question is, so administratively, we need to officially engage with our partner on this piece of work with a statement of work and all that. Got that. I think practically, can you give us some hints? Tonight, as far as if we have these five.
Between now and May twentieth, which is our next meeting.
Yeah, like, we've got these five organizations.
Get your committees set up, um, but, every member, you know, get them, get them that nailed down. Um, if there are, one of the things that's been very effective is having, uh, meetings with staff. Who are, and we say this in the proposal, that are responsible for certain aspects of it, like, maybe it's all Rich Cardella, I don't even know, but, um, whoever these staff people would be, um, it's very effective, particularly with the recreation, uh, understanding all the elements, the, uh, all the facilities, the age of the facilities, things like that. It's very helpful to do that, um, and learn about, uh, you know, the folks in charge of recreation facilities will tell you, oh, this field, you know, can't, can't hold grass on, it's overplayed, or we need lights here, or, or, or whatever it is. Um, and so that's very effective and it's not something that necessarily a planning board member would know or an environmental commission member would know. So, so find those people and, and we can integrate those folks into here. Um, I have to be honest, I, I thought I was coming here today just to talk about the proposal. I didn't realize that we're actually talking about this, so I'm not really prepared As much as you would like me to be, I was prepared to talk about the.
Yeah, I mean, we're, I I think having trouble getting started, right?
I understand.
Yeah, like we should sort of like.
Right.
Yeah, uh.
But so so the first thing is. Get your committee set up. Let them, let them know what the the process will be, that we need to, we should develop a schedule. I think that's really important, like a projected schedule for meetings and. Public, I mean, this all has to be scripted out. When the survey is gonna happen, when the open house is gonna happen, when the direct elements are gonna happen, um. All of that has to be scripted out. And we will do that. With you, right? That's not, I'm not gonna say, hey, give me your schedule, but we need to develop it and it would be. Um, based around municipal meetings, you know, so planning board meeting, governing body meeting, we we would. I don't need much from the governing body here, all I want is enough to say yes, endorse. The process and and yeah, your land use plan looks okay. Um, but. We we will center this around your public meeting schedule to the greatest extent we can. Um, I I don't anticipate having to have any special meetings, um. But the committee meetings and when they're gonna happen, we have to thread through there, and it may be that we want to organize the committee meetings so that the committee. Chairs or committee people can report to the planning board on the interim when we're not meeting with the planning board, so that's good to keep the updates and the information flowing back and forth, I think that's helpful. Um. Rather know now, uh, than later, if somebody's got an issue with something that the committee is doing that sits on planning board. As the deciders.
Maybe they could talk a little bit about the process that we talked. So. My understanding is. Uh, if the person involved is a. Professional. It can go without a bid. And I believe you're a professional.
Uh, I tried to.
There was, there, there was a official borough professional. Um, there was a little bit of sticker shock with the price, eggs aren't ninety-nine cents a dozen anymore kind of thing. Um, and so then there was a discussion about. Um. You know, the alternative path would be to to go up a bit formally, and then I think there's a lot of rules about we're required to take the lowest bidder. Um, and so I don't know for sure what path, I think we're still kind of talking about it, so maybe a good. Thing would be to say. You know, Mr. Sullivan is acceptable to us, or you know, we think it would be an excellent choice, or you know, something.
But he is, he's our planner, right?
He is our.
This is what I don't, this is, this is, I guess, where I'm confused is like. We we appointed a borough, I'm sorry, we appointed a planning board planner.
Yes.
For purposes of having a planning, an actual planning professor, professional serve the board. So I would, I like, I guess I don't understand why then we've we then put out. Our signature sort of output to bid when we have, we have a.
So the decision hasn't been made yet, but I think, I think the view is that the plan itself is a. Sort of separate. It's like an extra over, it's every decade. Um, and I'm I'm trying to recollect from the the session, which was like, I'm a little. So, um. But that's the, that's sort of the vibe.
Well, I think the the door is open because he could come back and say, my firm can't handle it. Right? He could say, we can't handle your master plan right now, maybe we we're understaffed, maybe we're overworked, so. We would have to have the availability, the option to go to market and and find someone to help us with it. If he's not coming back and saying that's a limitation, then certainly the door is open for us to. Say that's still our preference is to work with our appointed planner.
Yeah. At this point, for this board, I would make the recommendation to the governing body and let them. Do a program to.
And they're good, yeah.
Okay, so we, I will see by motion, yeah, I. Motion that we uh, recommend to the governing body that we hire our or our planning board planner to uh. Engage on our master plan reexamination. A second.
Yes. Mr. Olson.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Palin.
Yes.
Mr. Robb.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Baylen.
Yes.
Thanks.
I have a question for you, sorry, just just as it relates to some of the elements of the master plan, specifically. The business district, which is. A hot topic in town and something that needs quite a bit of work, so. I I guess the assumption is that that's not a. As we outlined it anyway, a category in and of itself. The assumption, I think, is that it falls as a subcategory in land use.
Maybe.
Correct. Is that, so, and is that, is that how? How we would see it and 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 within there as a subcategory. It can get the attention that it needs given some of the.
Absolutely, it's one of the toughest notes to crack into your land use uh, world.
Yeah.
Um. It it's tough, it's a lot of old development, um, you're constrained by uh, narrow. Or shallow lots there, let's say, you know, this, and they're right up against residential districts. Residential neighborhood, so how do you? Create a framework for redevelopment, which makes it awesome. Um. Provide promotes the economy, we're not doing an economic plan, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Revitalization there would in theory, and. You know, I always talk about the capacity for change, what's the capacity for change, right? What is the public's capacity for change? And what are the incentives that would actually get businesses to actually go that way, you know, from, although it does anything, it.
Yeah.
Sure.
It's tough not to crack.
Yeah.
But yeah.
I mean, look, I think there's low, I think we feel collectively and some of the people discover that there's some low hanging fruit and some easy way to solve some of those things. Yeah, maybe not easy, but there are certainly ways to solve some of it. So I think we just want to make sure that it's addressed appropriately in the master plan as the guiding document, so that. When. Co-changers are necessary at at council level that. It's guiding appropriate.
That's the whole purpose of the of the plan, and the land use plan is the fundamental foundation for your zone.
Great. Thank you. So co- committee set up the the borough teams or the different borough staff that needs to be involved. I guess an inventory of facilities, the age of the facilities and the different things that may need to be addressed um. For that, and then we should cut, we should come up with this, I mean, we started with a with a very. I mean, it's sixty.
Literals in twenty twenty-four.
Yeah. I mean, so what should we? I guess. Submit that to you, like, I mean.
Send me, send me your thoughts on the schedule, yeah.
Okay.
Um, but but yeah, we'll just, we'll we'll build it around there, but we'll build this out in the process. We'll share that, we'll talk about it, we'll adjust it. Um, if there are additional steps that you think you need in there, you let let me know. Um, or if I, um, if there are additional um. Engagement mechanisms or anything like that you need in there, just let me know.
Okay, so. So are we, I mean. We can do this outside of meetings, correct? I mean, like, how how does that work? Like, cause I, if I circulate something to everybody. You can circulate it for their review, but once you start having a back and forth conversation. Then it becomes an open publication.
Yeah, I. I always recommend a committee of the master, a a committee of the planning board, just so you don't have this issue that you can communicate actively at any time you want. And then brief the planning board in full. Uh, and get some feedback at your meeting time, so that that's an effective way, and that way you don't run into, if the entire planning board is the committee. Then the only way you guys can communicate is when you have a uh, an average public opinion. And you'll be able to reply on.
What are the pros and cons of, let's say, we want to have an environmental commission or a natural area person on the committee, is that? In your experience.
I think it's fantastic. I mean, that that's part of this thing, we're talking about conservation and recreation, and I couldn't imagine not having somebody who's on the environmental commission on that.
So that wouldn't violate your quality.
Would we normally include zoning as well, somebody to represent?
I think, I think zoning, um. Yes, I think most, most towns will include a zoning board member. On one of those committees because they bring to the table, I mean, maybe it's it's the land use plan, because they're the ones who are seeing where the folks are pushing against the. The regulations and asking for relief and. I mean, they they, I'm sure they submit, every year they submit their report here, the variances. It was height, it was FAR, whatever it was, and based on those, they may have recommendations, hey, listen, we've done ten variances in this neighborhood for the same thing. You know, people shouldn't have to pay a thousand dollars to come and get a variance, what do you say? And and put that in there.
Coming back to these meetings, just let's take another step further, beyonds. Boards, you know, like EC or other or zoning or what have you. General public, just general people on these committees as well. Is that typically what is done?
It can be. It can be, if there are folks who are. Interested and active and can maintain confidentiality, right? A lot of these things are confidential till you make them not confidential, not that they're returning. By privilege, but. You you know.
They're raw for a period of time.
They're raw and they're unbaked until they are public drafts. They are not. And you don't want people going out there and seeing something and they say something, somebody, and somebody says, I'm not gonna let that happen, and then they, next thing you know, you got forty people coming in and say, listen, I heard you're doing this, we don't want to do it. So you gotta be careful that way.
Um. I would say it's just, it's very, it's so far, in the few last few years, very common practice for our committees, whether they're, you know, from other boards or or directly from the governing body. You know, they're made up of. The general public, you know, people that volunteer, wanna wanna be involved.
That that that's fine. These committees shouldn't be enormous, though, right? Like, so let's be judicious about how they're put together, you know?
Was it, was it an optimal?
Oh, I would say like. Three to five people, maybe.
Okay.
I think, I think that's a good range, um, because you want them giving good directions to, you know, we don't decide anything, right? You know, we give you information so you all can make decisions, so. Um, but you don't want to cast a thousand, you won't get anything done.
So maybe do we want to take an action to formally reach out to all the other? Boards and commissions and ask for. Nominations or volunteers?
Sorry, we have five, we're talking about five committees, so three to five in each committee, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But they can be the same person, the same person could be on a couple committees.
Yeah, I mean, that could be like fifteen to twenty people that are. Yeah, I'd want, you know, I certainly want people from the green team. Garden Club, EC, to have an opportunity to join if they want to join.
Okay.
Um, I'm happy to communicate that myself, but you know, honestly, you've got a. There's the chair, you've got an opportunity to kind of. Invite people into the process, which could be nice.
I thi- I think that if you already know people, have people in mind, then you should probably have. Some discussions to talk about how the composition, not just thrown out to the the chairs or the committees, like think about the composition of them, I think about who. Might work well together in this, because someone might be great on the environmental commission. But not collaborating with other people who aren't on the envi- on commission to come to some decision. So I mean, think that's important to the composition.
Yeah, so I I think uh, for the next, um. For the next meeting, we should have a suggestion, a suggestive composition for each of the wards, or I'm sorry, for each of the committees. Um, and to the extent we can invite certain of those people into. I mean, you have ideas of people or you're, I I need some land uses Andrew. Housing is all of us. Circulation is Anna, utilities, um, are you Dave, and then Rich. Uh, and then Sean, you're conservation, recreation and open space, and so. I would think then. You you know, who should be. You you know, if you want to reach out to those individuals that you feel would be. And engage interest, I'm fine with that. With at each person that's leading the committee. Do that on their own.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I I'm fine, I mean, you you guys gotta pick people that you want to work with and that you think will be. You know, useful in the in the process and remember, like, this is gonna be time consuming, and so people that have. The will with all and be able to spend that time, um, and and come to the meetings, I mean, we're we're still having a little bit of an attendance problem. Um. And so we we need people that are gonna, you you know, regular income to meetings.
You repeat the five committees again.
So we have land use. Housing. Circulation. Utilities and then conservation, recreation and open space.
And then, and Brian, if you've got the packet of proposal, it's on page two, but.
And then depending on the. The, you you know, depending on the survey and what what comes back, I mean, there may be elements of the plan or other areas of the plan that have to. That are gonna require attention, maybe not require a committee, but are gonna have to, you know, are gonna require the board to. Put some time in on if there are issues that have to be addressed.
So beyond the personnel, if we're, we kind of started with the survey and conversation to beginning, do you, do you typically? Have that committee? Sort of generate the. The kind of the issues and and start to formulate, like, where do we need to be asking questions?
Each of the committees would.
But it's based on like. Known problems, it's based on.
Known problems and general questions about, you know, and we can, you know, once we see what your issues are and the things you want to know. Then we can help you refine that, and so it's relevant to inputs. And the process to get to a point.
Any like tools, like automated tools you have to kind of like? Take, take that in and spit out questions?
Um. Could we use any AI-generated questioned? Software yet, but um. No, it's it's really just looking at the questions and seeing. Um, how it went really, how we can wait, how the question, the information you want, how to ask the question. And like, there's different ways to ask questions, right? So so we try to do that, some of the questions are gonna be, you know, we try to minimize. Questions that uh, require reading and answer, we want the answer to be pre-populated and be, or either pulling down, you know, ranking things or. Um, choosing things. Um, we try to make it as, that makes it easier to get the results and and to process them. Um. But we usually will have. I would think for each of the sectors, we would probably have like one. Um. You know, open question. Right? Where people can say something and and say, like, here's the things you want, and actually, you know, we can, we can also review that, I mean, see how many times somebody mentioned it. Um, and and that starts to give us more information about, like, this is something that's important to lots of people, or this is something that one person said. Right, but yet we we always have like at least a couple of open questions on a survey. But processing, if you had fifty open questions, processing fifty open questions is a bear.
And it's not like the right everyone.
Yeah, 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 we should know enough about the, what we want to know from a survey to be able to avoid that.
Yeah. No, I'm just thinking, like, you you brought up the business districts and it's. You know, sometimes you can pose a question in a certain way, everyone's like, yeah, of course I want that.
Yeah.
But it's like, if you can put it in context of a. But how do you prioritize it, you know?
Yeah.
Like, you want a business district, but do you want all these other things that go along with it? And people are like, so actually you don't like all those things that go along with it.
Which I think was in the last survey, it was like. How do you prioritize it from one to five, if I remember correctly, and they, you know, they prioritize all the different elements. Within there, right? So, yeah.
And 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 as we get, as we talk, if the survey gets. I mean, if you want a complex survey, you know, we'll have to talk about that from a standpoint of the cost.
We should keep it simple, stupid, I mean, but because otherwise we're gonna confuse everyone.
That's exactly right.
Too much in the weeds down there, it's.
But if you say to somebody, listen, I'd love to have the business district where we vitalize more economic development. And they say, everybody says, yeah, and then you say, okay, we're gonna put in drive-through restaurants all the way down, right?
Yeah.
That's what people say.
Yeah.
Well, most people say.
Yeah.
Um, I'm curious, are we clear on how to articulate this to the to to the governing body?
Um, yeah, I mean, I. I certainly can articulate what we've talked about, I don't know if you're gonna have. Is there any? Memo or anything?
I can write something down.
Yeah, I think whatever our recommendation is, and I would, I would also. Uh, I would also, I don't know, I'll be involved with this, but since so much time has elapsed, I mean, a a decision would be something we would want quickly, I think, from governing body. You know, not like, let's discuss it over a couple of meetings, yet, you know. Uh, I I just want to see. Um, any comments in the public?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're gonna one day.
Is anyone up there?
Nobody's on.
Alright, does anybody have anything else? So so for next week, we'll have committee suggested committee, yeah. And if people wanna. Um, if if those individuals would like to. Come to the meeting, that's fine as well.
We're gonna have an agenda, I mean, we're gonna have items that need to be, uh, we're gonna have new business next, next meeting, so we'll have. The the road, um, the road issue that needs to be discussed, um, and commented on for the uh, for the governing body. And then we're gonna have the COAR application. So we will have other other items on the on the agenda, so I mean, we should plan for it to be a. And and I guess. We'll also. I guess, put together a schedule, or I mean, I have, I can revisit the schedule that I put together last year. And circulate it to everybody for comment and.
Sounds agree, yeah.
We can push that off to you, we can, we can push that to you between now and the May twentieth meeting. And then get comments back from you before our May twentieth meeting, so I can go over it if everybody. Useful, um. So we'll have the committees formed by May twentieth, we'll have. A draft timeline and comments for the planner. Um. And then I think if anybody needs, or if anybody wants to, I I guess, do we need to get into the actual document itself? Before the next meeting?
I guess my question was coming back, if if the survey is relatively early in the process. And what it sounds like, you know. Not knowing what the plan is yet, but knowing kind of what we're working backwards from next August. At what point do we need to be? Do you have a an idea like when it needs to be released? In the coming months?
Depends on how, yes, it's in a couple of months and it's, uh. It really is gonna require. The committees to digest. You know, what the issues are, look at the previous master plan and and reexamination report. And use that as a, as a, as a information to help guide what the questions are. And I would try to encourage. Uh, you know, if each committee, if you have five committees, you know, we're gonna have demographic questions, I think they're probably like. Maybe eight to ten of those. Um. You know, there may be folks who. Answer the survey who may not be residents, right? So there's gonna be a box to check whether you live here or not. Those kind of things. So there's a chunk up front in the demographics, but you know, if you're thinking about, you know, five to seven questions per sector. Right? That's probably a good. Place to start. Um, and that, um, if you need to add something, you know, then you've got a little room. Um. You know, you want somebody to be able to do this like fifteen. Minutes to twenty minutes max, max.
So by June, would we want the survey ready to go? I I'm just, I'm thinking is, if I'm wearing the hat of a committee. Lead. What am I working against?
I mean, I would think we would want a draft survey by the June meeting. Well, uh, or, or, uh, we would want, I mean, not that, I mean, we would wanna get to you, I think.
Our questions.
Our question, what we feel the questions are.
Yeah, there's some homework to do on on the committee side and then the advisory could, you know, the master plan advisory committee, which is the top dog and the. Other planning board, master plan advisory committee and those other committees. Um, so, um, yeah, if you've done your, done your homework and you say, yes, here's, here's the things we wanna know. We'll look at the questions, we'll figure out how to ask them, or or if we need to, maybe they're fine. Um, and look at how we're gonna organize the survey and so whether it's multiple voice, whether it's, you know, you know. Five scale things. Um, what, however that goes, um, but yeah, if you, yeah, based on after you've done your homework and you had a chance to review it all together. Then yes, um, we'll look at that draft. And if that's gonna be by June, that's by June. Um, once we decide to build a survey, it's gonna go quickly. Once we have all that information.
So we could theoretically have a survey before the July meeting that we can then start to. Get out into the public.
Well, yeah, well, there's, you know, there's, before you even get out of the public, there's testing, you gotta do the testing to make sure it works, you gotta make sure it works on iPhones, you gotta make sure. Setting Android phones, you gotta make sure it works on computers. Um, so there's, there's a, there's periods of getting that right. Uh, but that doesn't mean that, you know, if I were to do the time. Schedule for you. A lot of things overlap. Right? That survey being built is not stopping anything else, not linear timeframe, like there are, you know, we'll be looking at all the. Uh, the data, right? We'll be pulling together all the spatial data on the town, we'll be pulling together, um, any other information, you know, town. Will be, you know, bothering Rich to give us all of his information, anybody else. So. While we're doing that analysis, that survey can be built, um. Because it's really an overall vision, visioning type thing. I call it a vision survey, but it's just a very high level survey.
Well, and I'm just thinking, like. From my calendar, thinking about the calendar, right? People in the summer are kind of checking out, you know, is that a great time to drop a survey and expect a lot of response? We've got the fireman's fair in August, is that a great tool to like?
Great opportunity.
Rally around and use that as a pivot point. We've got September and start school, you know, like, there's just.
Yeah.
There's a natural cycle that we can. Be all aligned with and we can try to operate outside of. And so. If we can get our our stuff aligned for the early summer, I just feel like that might give us some flexibility to either put it out in the summer when.
You should have a booth at the fire.
I was gonna say.
You should have a booth or a table.
Yeah, absolutely.
No question. And you'd have QR codes there for the survey, people go to the QR code, they pop it in, then they can do it right there before they have too much fun at the fair. And, um. That's a great kickoff point. Um, it's hit or miss in the summertime with survey.
Yeah.
Um. We've used, you know, those real estate signs? We've used those. And we put them out and just put it all over town and with, and they're big yellow. They're not pretty, right? But people all of a sudden are seeing like a little logo, the branding for the, for the master plan. And then this and then that, and then they, they're like, oh, tell it, it. We should say, tell us what you want. That's what it says.
I I think Sean mentioned the Borough Buzz earlier, I think, I don't think it's too soon to just send a note out via the Borough Buzz saying that the planning board is gonna be attacking the master plan. You know, contact us if you have any, you know, initials, yeah, maybe we mention the elements and. And add an email address or something like that. Well, I don't. We don't write all this chatter early or maybe.
I think it's, I I like the, I like the early, but I also likes, you know, the the branding, I think is gonna be really helpful. Kind of come up with like a a simple logo, you know, whatever it is. Then it just becomes something that's identifiable, whether we choose to do lawn signs or posters with QR codes, even up in, you know, the, um. Here in Borough Hall, just having something in the. In the hallway.
And we ask for a branding volunteer for the public.
With surveys too, I mean. Um. Do we, do we need to do, does it need to be translated or not? We're good with.
Me, English?
Yeah.
Interesting. Yeah, I don't know. Suspect. Yes, everyone is English, but I don't say it.
Um, but, um, if if for instance, you had a a neighborhood that was mostly bilingual, or whether it was Chinese or Spanish or something. Um, you could actually go into the neighborhood with somebody, you know, we we have people, Spanish in my office, they could actually facilitate. You know, doing the the survey. We have a built in translation into the documents. You know, um, most folks can use like Google Translate or something like that, I think that's done, it's not perfect, um. But also on pop ups, like, let's say you're at the fair and the survey is active, right? Or you're at something else. Um, we've done it where somebody has an iPad and you stand there and they have the survey thing and somebody's not comfortable and you say, okay, we do wanna do the survey right here. If you get a bit of that.
And you, and you've done it where you actually reach out into the community, go door to door with that iPad and kind of?
No, no, it's a pop up. It's like, you know, you've got a a table and you're sitting outside the library or something and folks are walking by. I'm just giving you examples of the the types of more granular outreach you can do.
We keep track of the same person does more than one survey? That, do people stuff the ballot box?
Yes, yes, we can see, um, uh, we can see whether or not, um. I forget the techno, I'm not very technological, but, um, we can see, uh, if there have been multiple surveys from the same, uh. So, so that can have an. The the, and so, and so that's something.
Might have two people from the same household.
Yeah, that's right.
Right, I mean, generally, i- if 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 that's the way it goes, right, if it's the same IP address. You're gonna have some of that in there. The only way to not do that is everybody gets their own individual code and you set it to.
Exactly. People shut down those.
Maybe it's.
Yeah.
Um, so, so you're gonna have to tolerate some level of maybe somebody stuffed the ballot box or something like that, but. If it's anomalous and we're seeing the results, we could pick it up.
Right.
And just so I'm clear, for the May meeting. You're looking for suggestions on. The members of all.
The members of each of the committees.
We're not doing any outreach until we.
If you, if you wanted to, if you wanted to outreach and engage people.
You don't wanna discuss the peers of board first and then do outreach?
Um, I I mean.
I think it probably, it probably makes sense if you have names in mind, because of what their position is, no way. To to discuss it first. If they're at least willing to consider it, then you know, you can put them on there.
Yeah, I I think. If you wanna have a discussion with somebody and say, look, we've formed these committees. Um. For the, for the master plan reexamination, we need input from different constituents, um. I'd like you to, you know, consider doing it, you know, you could come to the next meeting and hear what it's all about.
Yeah.
I think that's all fine, like, I I don't, I don't have any problem with that. I think that's a good thing, actually.
Let's, but make sure they know it's a twelve month tour duty.
Right, and it's, it's gonna be a twelve month process and there's gonna be, you know, multiple meetings.
Yeah.
Um, and document review.
And document review, yeah.
Because at the end of this, those committees are gonna be charged. Here's the land use plan element. That will sort, you know, and 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 when we do that, we'll be down here, we'll have it on screen, I'll be marking up maps, we'll be doing things and. Until those committees say, yes, we're good with this, this should be put in the draft. And the master plan committee says, yes, this is put in draft. And ultimately, the master plan committee recommends to the planning board the adoption of this document.
Yeah.
You know, it's not, Sullivan doesn't walk in here and say, here, here's a master plan and he was like, what was he, right? It's the planning board is the steward of this thing. And right, and the master plan committee is the steward of the process and the master plan, and there's a recommendation and advocacy for the adoption of it.
Do you have a standard answer for if people ask how many hours? You know, will this take per month or the, over the year? Is there, is there a rough estimate?
No, but but I mean, if you look at our, if you look at our. Look at our, the the technical, um, meetings, there's ten meetings, so like, we're assuming that there's gonna be ten of those meetings, um.
Well, that's for, that's just. That's two per.
That's two per.
For you guys.
But you guys can be, right, you know.
Much more, yeah, much more.
So. I don't, I don't, to answer your question, I don't.
It's, I think, the way I've seen it. A monthly cadence isn't bad to try to keep. It, the flow going and then, you know, if you've got a down month, like in August, you've got a down month, you've got a. Back, I think that's the expectation on instead of anyone, I'm gonna talk to.
One to my.
But 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 once, but it's, it's, it's not just having recurring meetings, like there will be a focus point in time where we're gonna. Meet, we're gonna meet with you and and these committees and we're gonna say, listen, here's the issues. We need decisions about this, we're gonna go back into our office and we're gonna, you know, adjust things and come back and then we're gonna hand it to you again. And we're gonna do it again. It's basically like doing draft elements like this. But there's not a lot of. You're not gonna need a lot of meetings to just churn this thing. You're gonna be fake, you're gonna be handed information to make decisions on. And as long, hopefully that doesn't take a long time, you know, you know, two to three months of that, but generally, if we're moving. I mean, we would set up meetings so that we're back to back to back. And we're sitting here and we're located, you know, this committee's out, this committee's in, there we go. And we've done. I've done processes in two months and we've had three committee meetings with five committees. And we've gotten that done. And it's, and and it, and it's fresh, so you don't forget about it, right? So you remember the issues you're talking about, you remember this and you remember what we talked about, and so it's. Back and forth for that period, but it's not like you're just giving every month to say, hey, what you. It's, it should be very focused. And that's the job of us to to make sure that schedule reflects that period. As long as you're comfortable with it, whatever period you're comfortable with, but we're gonna be pushing you to really have a compressed period of thoughtfulness, decision making.
Gotcha.
Makes sense.
Any, anybody have anything else? Alright, I'll move to close.
We talk about Fairhaven Road. So.
Okay. I mean, we can, I was gonna close the meeting, but we can.
So, twenty Fairhaven Road, um, that's the property bought next to the dock. And the governing body, uh, wants the planning board's opinion on it. There's a, there's a sheet of paper, a couple of sheets of paper. Um, and. Your next meeting is the twentieth. They wanted it by, uh, Drew, or the fifteenth. Um, but I just texted him and the twentieth will be okay. So. Take some time and look at that, okay, give it one shot.
Yeah, we're gonna have it, we're gonna have, we're gonna discuss it at the meeting, so, um, so we'll, so she'll, you'll.
I can distribute it in advance, yeah, it's twenty two pages.
Yeah, you'll distribute everything, you'll distribute it, we'll talk about it at the meeting, and so there's gonna be three, uh, real. So there's COAR. This, and is there something else next meeting? No, okay, good, so.
So big picture, we're gonna tear that house down and what's it gonna be?
Yep.
Slide park or is it joking, or, uh, you know, benches and. Greenery.
Do a lot of people use, um, the Normandy, like the end. You know?
I don't live on that street, so I don't know.
More people would use. And that, you know, church plays that every Wednesday or whatever it is, there, that that's definitely gonna get.
So I don't wanna get, I don't wanna go in the weeds here, but like, I read through the document. There's no recommendations. So the committee kind of puts together a framework of a timeline and trying to get that information, so are we meant to react to something? Or are we meant to just kind of? Generate our own opinions as the planning.
Yeah, good question. Let me follow up on that. Let me ask, oh, that's true, what?
Sorry? It came through the EC as well, and so it's like, it's, she's, it's like twenty people, but most of them.
Yeah, totally.
There's three bullet points for the planning board, I can read them if you want.
Yeah, I agree.
Ensures the conceptual plan aligns with Ferry Haven's master plan and active transportation plan. Evaluates zoning considerations and how the proposed part integrates with existing municipal land use policies. Provides oversight to ensure that the conceptual plan remains feasible and consistent with the broader community development strategies. So that, it sounds like. We will react to a plan. Um. That's my sense.
Conceptual plan will pass the point. Yes, essentially.
Yeah. Doesn't, doesn't fit.
Proceeding to that, yeah. Yeah.
Great.
Uh, thanks, Ron. Uh, moved to closer.
Second.
Second.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good to see it.